Be in the seminary or the venue for sure that is in his honor. That is a tribute all of the seminarians will be attending and that's going to be something that you should not miss if you are music lover, pillar of my thing, I'll be a person. But I'm just bringing it to you because Raymond, I've got an ill parrot, but I've been with this group, I've been with this hymic three times late 70s which I was a student of law in San Beda and I was still a student of law in the early 80s and the seminario No, no, member, Seminario, like a thing. But now this 70, 80 seminarians mostly are already priests, some of them are seniors. They have won in three consecutive hymic. That's why the seminarista cannot anymore join the hymic because they have already acquired the Hall of Fame and these are the people who will be having concern. Anyway, just for information, we're waiting for some to come because we are having a very important before we will proceed with the citizens hour. Do we already have quorum? Secretary Roy Alex?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we already have the quorum.
Now we will make it on record for the information of the personalities here in this session hall that this November 12, 2019, Tuesday, 1:00 PM, session being called have complied the requirement of quorum, but in order that identification will have to be put in our record, our secretary acting Roy Alex, the brother of a former councillor Christopher Alex, will now make the necessary acknowledging of who are in this hall. Go ahead.
Member Raúl D. Alcoceba, member Nestor Archival Senior, member Antonio V. Cuenco, member Albin M. Dison, member Eugenio F. Gabuya Junior, member Raymond Albin N. García, member Joel C. Garganera, member Jerry Elguardo, member Donaldos C. Honteveros, member Leia O. Hapson, member Priscaniny O. Mabatid, member Franklin Ong, member Renato Z. Osmania Senior, member Eduardo Arama Junior, member Jessica P. Resch, member David F. Tumula, member Joy Agusus G. Young, member Philip S. Safra. Mr. Chairman, there are 10 members present including the presiding officer.
So be it on record that we have that numbers. Now we go to the majority floor leader.
Mr. Chairman, may I move for the following, Mr. Chairman, to dispense with the reading of the minutes and resumee of the regular session held on November 5, 2019 as well as the approval of the minutes and resumee of the November 5, 2019 regular session. So move, Mr. Chairman, in an omnibus manner.
Discussion, no objection, carried.
Mr. Chairman, likewise, earlier this morning, we had a public hearing on three very important ordinances and I would also like to move to ratify the proceedings held earlier during our public hearing of the three ordinances. So move, Mr. Chairman, in an omnibus manner.
Before banging the gable, the chair wanted to be around, but the traffic is just terrible. When I arrived here from the airport and then my driver did without my prior consent, did a change of direction, wanting to avoid the traffic of the first bridge, went to the Fernand Bridge and still there was no movement and it is even worse than the first bridge. So much that my heart has been beating so fast, so excited to be with you, but of course I cannot do otherwise because I only have my car, I did not have a helicopter. So gentlemen, please, my apologies whoever had presided, member Raymond García, member Don Don Hontiveros, thank you for taking the kajil in my behalf. And of course, I had a chance to be there in the turnover and that was the only thing I was able to catch up. So thank you for those who were around and hoping the rest also will make it up in another time. Now we also have to recognize the arrival of member Tumula, member Garganera, and who else? Member Rama, because the rest has been duly acknowledged and member Tumula was also busy because we have a visitor, the Vice Mayors League have changed their heart from having their gathering, the General Assembly in Davao, which would have brought me to Davao and that would bring me absent today. I did not ask for that earthquake so that I'll be here because the earthquake that is ongoing, I do not know when the tremors will stop, the reason why the venue has been changed, but still the same hotel, Marco Polo in Davao and we are having our assembly in Marco Polo Cebu Busai. So pray for the success of our assembly, although yours truly, I have not intended to run, but because I was once already the president and I wish in the years to come there will be a paradigm shift, not a paradigm shift, return to the normal that there shall really be an election. So wishing that will be a thing to look forward maybe in the next term. So with that, we have to welcome all the vice mayors from the different part of this archipelago and later the mayor and myself will be attending and definitely we wish to also welcome them there when we will be in the venue. And we thank member David Tumula for attending to some concern like the ambulance, the police and everything with respect to response concern and preparation just on when, if there are what we call eventualities, we are there assisting in behalf of the city government. Thank you very much, Honorable Tumula.
Mr. Chairman.
Member Dison?
May I just humbly manifest, Mr. Chairman, and request to the members of the Sangunian to attend the next schedule of our public hearings so we can achieve the proper quorum, but most importantly, Mr. Chairman, so we can also get the valuable inputs of our colleagues on various proposed legislations. That's my humble manifestation, Mr. Chairman.
Made it on record, as I said, the chair will be calling the attention in writing so that every special session and then the secretary reminding the chair or the chairman so that we will be bringing the name that we have missed you on the special session, wishing you will be around so that we will not be missing you and be present in the next special session. Why are you laughing, Member Gabuya? Anyway, Member García?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, I think we have not dispensed with the ratification of the public hearing earlier.
So we, no objection, hearing done, it is being carried. Next item.
Item F, citizens' hour. We have the appearance of the consortium SM Prime Holdings Incorporated and Ayala Land Incorporated and the South Road Properties Management Committee in order to present their plans and programs for the use of the property located at SRP, which is the aforementioned entities had purchased from the Cebu City Government.
Before getting into this very important particular part of our agenda, as I also welcome Priscaniny Mabatid, who also together with member Tumula and some delegation from the city government as headed by our mayor, Mayor Edgar Colina Belia, who went to Mindanao and have actually our presence felt with what we have approved out of the privileged speech being done by our majority floor leader Raymond García to the tune of 10 million worth of items that was being also in advance with the advanced team giving us the guideline as to what ought to be purchased as the needed things so that when we will be bringing our aid, it will not be left in decay in a warehouse because it will be coming to be no longer useful because of it too many. So I wish the 10 million that we all have agreed in this session when Member García delivered a privileged speech will definitely have reached the beneficiaries and maybe there will be in the next session a report. It will be on the privileged speech? Okay, good. So that will already bring all of us to be properly guided. So we thank you whoever were there and maybe you can mention member Tumula, who were there during the group, who went there in advance, the next, who were there together with the mayor in the distribution and what are the other things that we provided aside from the 10 million? I'm pretty sure there are other logistical equipments or otherwise if there were. So, Member García?
Mr. Chairman, the representatives of the Ayala SM Consortium are present here today. Mr. Secretary, can we ask who has identified his or her intention to speak for and behalf of the consortium?
There is only one speaker, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Jeanette Hapson, but they have also signified that if there are questions from the members of the council, they have technical people to answer the queries or questions of the council.
Before it's in the agenda that the SRP Management Committee, have they been duly informed? Because I'm not seeing any personality from the South Road Properties Management Committee. Is there anyone representing? Because if this is referring to this committee, so I am presuming this is from the side of the city government. Am I correct, Member García?
We have invited the SRP Management Office, but nobody has, nobody is around here.
I think.
Maybe we can, can we request the Sergeant at Arms to call the, or whoever from the staff of the Sangunian?
We called earlier, Mr. Chairman, and they have not confirmed that they will be attending, but we will.
Who are they?
Attorney Jose C. Dalus, the third manager of South Road Properties Management Office, Mr. Chairman.
Who else? Because management is not only one.
Mr. Chairman, I know that the assistant of Attorney Dalus is Architect Ann Cuisson.
And who else? Because it's a committee. A committee of two is not a committee. It should be a committee which we have in our council, it is a committee usually of four or five. So there should have been some personalities and the council ought to know. So we wish that by the time whoever will be coming, they should give us the proper information, especially that we will be tackling in due time the annual budget, which definitely all offices, which is about, how many offices do we have right now? 24, 25, 26?
Something like that, Mr. Chairman.
It should not be something like that.
I don't know, I am not aware.
We have to be too sure. Member, Secretary, can you please be too sure about it later, okay?
Yes, the secretary is counting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Is counting how many will.
Yeah, do not count now because we will be wasting time. Later on, just be ready when we ask along the way when we talk about SRP because this is a very important discussion we have now. Especially na asanidining mga atong mga kaubanan na adinisa gallery, I would have wished, as I reminded the secretary, maybe you have forgotten, that the barangay captain should have been around, then NGO should have been around, then CDC should have been around because especially this is a matter where everybody should be aware. Because I know some of them, Albin, especially the one occupying the gallery, their concern is return to work, no, no, not return to work, return to their location, that is their concern. I do not know whether they are concerned about, but don't worry because if this project will continue to be functional and operational, your employment, your children's concern will be answered. Okay, next.
May I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that pending the arrival of the SRP Management Office representative, we will already proceed with the discussion and the presentation of the consortium. So can we recognize the resource speaker?
Ms. Jeanette Hapson, Mr. Chairman.
Can we recognize the speaker to please approach the podium and give your presentation?
But I think it will not be good if the SRP committee is not around recess.
Please be seated. Session resume.
Mr. Chairman, with the presence of our SRP manager Joey Delus and the consortium, we may now call on Ms. Hapson for her presentation.
For a while before proceeding with the citizens' hour, may the Chair be guided as to who among the councilors that manifested that they are attending or they cannot be attending?
Mr. Chairman, only one has filed his official leave, that is Member Renato Z. Osmania Junior, and I was informed by the staff of Councilor Ong that he will be late for today's session, Mr. Chairman.
Member Osmania, how long, how many times has been attending the session?
The whole month of November, he will be absent, Mr. Chairman.
The whole month of?
November.
Three absences, second, please, I wish the rest, Member Garcia, be in a class, there is what we call class standing, and we wish, one day, please, have it reported to the office of the Presiding Officer, so that I will be calling especially those, how many times been out of the country, how many times been absent in a session, so that we can also bring to their attention, especially when we are tackling very important issues, especially now, that's why I wish Mr. Alcibal could already be around, and then, Member Sapra should be back, Member Mabatid should be called upon, because they have been already around, I do not wish to be proceeding with them not around, especially we are talking about very important matters, Member Rama, so I would not want yet to proceed, please call another recess. Before resumption, yeah, I overheard that some chick just have attention being called to be present, but the Chair not been told that they will be leaving, and it's not quite fine when I'm just around to be told, so please do not make it as a practice, because I can just be talk, so that we will not be expecting. Now, we have Mr. Alcibal already around, Franklin Ong, is he arriving? Okay, so please, session resume, Member Garcia.
Mr. Chairman, can we now recognize the representative, Ma'am Hapson, for the presentation of the site development plan, the South Road Properties?
Aside from her bringing the presentation, can she also introduce the people that she brought with her, so that we will be able to be aware who are on the side of her group? You can now approach the podium.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and May Hapon, May Hapon also to the honorable members of the City Council. I'm Jeanette Hapson, and I will be speaking in behalf of the Consortium, which is composed of SM Prime, Ayala Land, and Cebu Holdings. With me this afternoon, who will also be speaking as resource people are Mr. Russell C. of SM, and of course, Mr. Bong Gonzalez, our technical person from Makati Development Corporation.
You are so many. You have not introduced the rest, please introduce the rest.
These are members of our legal team, will be supporting us also for our presentation this afternoon.
But they have names.
Can we ask you to introduce yourselves?
Good afternoon, I'm Salvador Pena, Your Honor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I'm Chrissy Bautista, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, I'm Ilwar Dm. Consulta.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, members of the Council, I'm Helene Go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, I'm Alessi Vilches.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, I'm Sherry De Villia.
The parliamentary procedure, I'm not a chair, I'm a chairman.
They're being politically correct, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
And once again, May Hapon, and thank you for this opportunity, for allowing us to present to you the plans we have for the 26 hectare property along South Road Properties. Okay, I think this is, everybody knows this, this is the location of the project, it is along the south coastal, that junction along South Coastal Road and F. Vistill Mambaling Road. Okay, this is an artist's perspective of the building massing of the 26 hectares, and it is expected to generate at least 310 billion in terms of investment for the full development. Estimated total jobs at full development, we are looking at, and this is just for the IT and BPO buildings, we're looking at 480,000 employees, we're computing about three shifts to that, and multiplying that to the outsourcing multiplier framework of Tholons, there are four jobs generated for every one BPO worker, so total of jobs generated at full development of the 26 hectares is about over 2 million jobs to be generated by this project. This is the master plan of the development, so that includes, of course, the arena and the convention center, and the other areas are for mixed-use development. We will also, we will also be laying down infrastructure to support the kinds of development that we will be having at the property. This includes a linear park that is 36 meters wide and 320 meters long, that's about over a hectare of open green space at the very center of the development, which will promote pedestrianization, because it will be walkable with covered walks on the side of this linear park. We will have road networks which are 30 meter wide for the main thoroughfares and 24 meter wide for the other areas. Of course, similar to our other developments here in Cebu, cabling will be underground, so power will be underground, as well as telecoms, what you call this, cabling for telecoms will be underground, and we will be connecting to the main power grid for the power supply, and we've also talked to water supplier as well here in Cebu to provide for the requirements of the development. This is the linear park we were talking about, so if you would see the key map there upstairs, it actually crosses the whole development, it makes the development very walkable, and it promotes green space and walking for those who will be using the property. And again, this is another artist's perspective, I believe this is the walkway that crosses towards SMC side, so also the pedestrians can go directly to the mall, which is right across. So these are just perspectives showing how the development will look in the future once it is completed. This is a perspective, or a conceptual perspective, of the SM Arena and the Convention Center, so it will be, it will have a 16,000 seating capacity, and of course, it will be a venue for various sports events, concerts, exhibitions, and conventions, so they will be bringing the similar experience of those big concerts that they have in Manila, so hopefully, we can also have those here in Cebu in the near future. Okay, and moving along, these are the estimated construction dates that we have planned for the development, we are planning to start construction by the first quarter of next year, and the horizontal works are the development of the site, including the arena and the start of the arena and the convention center, we plan to complete site development by the second quarter of 2022, so all the infrastructure and roadwork will be laid down. And specific to the convention center and the arena, they will start at the same time, quarter one of 2020, and the target opening of those two facilities is on the fourth quarter of 2023. And that's basically the development in a nutshell of the initial site development of the 26 hectares.
Anyone who would wish, Member Quenko?
There will be at least 2,000 jobs available right now? How many jobs, how many people are working right now on this, for the project?
We haven't started construction yet, sir, so the figures we showed will be once the buildings are up, yes, sir.
In the first quarter of next year?
In the first quarter of next year, will still be construction, sir, we'll start with construction.
All right, what is your estimate as to the residences of these people who will be holding jobs? Are there many, are there more from the city of Cebu or outside the city of Cebu?
Of course, together with SM, our priority, we will be working with the Peso Office, and we will prioritize, of course, hiring of, as long as the skill sets is available, prioritize hiring local Cebuano skilled workers.
Yeah, we hope that there will be more jobs for the residents of the city of Cebu than in other places, because the area is located right here, in the heart of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We hope you, we hope you will succeed and finish the project as soon as possible.
We are also excited to start, sir.
Member Guardo, Mr. Chair, may know what are the benefits the city will get from these consortiums projects?
Specific to the city, we will be, as mentioned in the, in one of the first slides, we mentioned in terms of monetary benefit, no. I think the total there is 310 billion, and I think about 22 billion of that, in terms of permits and taxes, will go to the city at full development.
That project, for how many years the lifespan, I mean the duration?
Yes, the initial or the site development works will be completed in two years, so 2022, and then the arena and the convention center follows in 2023, but the lifespan for the various other multipurpose buildings or mixed-use buildings, I think we estimate about another 15 to 20 years to build up the whole area.
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the lady, is there any possibility for the stoppage of this project? Any possibility, any force majeure? We hope that this project will go on uninterrupted.
Not that we can foresee, sir, we hope not.
Are you optimistic about the full blast?
Yes.
You will finish the project, without any interruption?
Yes, definitely, sir.
Thank you.
Member Guardo, and also, what will, what will make this project, the Consortium of Besanayala, different from, differ from other projects you have outside of Cebu?
Outside of, well, in Cebu in particular, the plan from the very beginning is to help spread development towards the southern part of Cebu City, because if you've noticed, most of our developments are towards the northern part, so this will spread development towards the southern part of Cebu City, and of course, especially for Cebu and Visayas, I think this is first of this scale, an arena and a convention center is big as what SM will be building within the area.
Member Garcia?
This is 26 hectare property. Now, since you purchased this during the time of Mayor Micrama, the price was still less than what it is now, if I project this now, this should be about, the value should be about maybe 26 billion at 100,000 per square meter. Now, we are, that amount is already, we already forego that amount, because it is already with you, so what other benefits can the city expect in terms of, let's say, business taxes, real property taxes, amusement taxes, all of those other taxes? Do you have a computation on how much that particular investment will generate in terms of taxes to the city of Cebu?
Yes, we have an estimated computation, and I think, I think I mentioned earlier, in terms of specific to the city of Cebu, that's about 22 billion at full development of the 26 hectare property.
What's the 22 billion, in terms of what?
In terms of permits and taxes, that we will be, let me just.
Okay, because if you look at it, the real property tax on land, that's 26 hectares, I think that will generate a lot more, no? There's also a real property tax on the improvement, such as building, which will, which will generate even more than just the land?
Yes.
Because when we compute that, it is per floors, diba?
Yes.
So you don't know, you don't have any inkling, except that 22 billion, you're saying 22?
Yes, that is our estimate, we do have a breakdown of it, and the 22 billion, sir, is on the side of the developer first, that's not even including the tenants will be coming into our development as well, so that includes permits, locational clearance, business tax, RPT on land, RPT on improvements, and share and gross income tax.
So that's 22 billion per year?
For the entire development.
Yes, per year, because real property tax and permits for mayor's business is on a yearly basis, or that's for the?
For the lifetime, sir.
For the what?
For the entire 20?
Correct, but you pay real property taxes every year, you pay business taxes every year, so my question is, is that 22 billion yearly, every five years, every month?
I think we estimated it at 15 years, sir, the 22 billion.
22 billion in 15 years?
Yes.
Okay, of course, but you provide jobs and all?
Yes.
Okay. I have another question.
Member Sapra?
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
For a while, for a while, anything from Member Garcia?
Yeah, just have another question, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, rather, do you have any, because we're also concerned about the environment when it comes to this kind of development, so what are your sustainable features for the development of this area?
Okay, we will be introducing, of course, as we also use in our other developments, we will have like energy-efficient lighting systems, each building will also be required to provide its own sewage treatment plant, and then, in the road sections that we have, we have plans for bike lanes as well, and as you've seen earlier, the linear park, which is a very important component of the development, promotes pedestrianization, so we hope people will be walking instead of using vehicles inside and around the property.
Okay, follow-up question, Mr. Chairman, what are the components in the mixed-use development? Is it residential, what are offices, what is the mixed use, what is the mix of the mixed use?
Okay, in general, the whole development will be about 70% commercial and 30% residential. Important components of this development are, of course, the arena and the convention center, and we will have various uses such as BPO offices and residential buildings, so, and then even hotels and retail facilities, so all of these other mixed-use components will be determined by the market demand later on, but the very first components, you will already start building.
Mr. Chairman, last again, Mr. Chairman, this is about trabajo, can the consortium make it a policy to prioritize the hiring of Cebuanos?
Yes, as mentioned with Counselor Quenko earlier.
But make it a policy, not only a promise, I want it a policy within the company.
Yes, sir.
Or an ordinance might be in order. Member Sapra?
Not necessarily Cebu, Mr. Chairman, but Cebu City residents, especially from the South District, only in the development, the South District, especially Mambaling area, in the next side, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe Sapra has never been thinking of running Maybe Safra has never been thinking of running for vice mayor, only for congressman. Anyway, for a while, for a while, Member Tumulak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just ask the speaker, Mr. Chairman, in regards to water. Because as what we have seen on the presentation, on the full blown is 2 million, 2 million. The question is, this development also has its own water source or desalination, whatever?
We already have a commitment from the PWRI, certification from PWRI, to supply the water demand for the entire development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, just.
Safra, Member Yang?
You have a commitment from PWR, may I know where they will get the water? It's the same question. They will, they will get the water from Manila at the mountain, Mualamitubig. So, for me, honestly, if you're going to ask me, you should get your water from the sea, desalination.
That's why.
I think that's the only solution, because even if you get one liter of water from the mainland, that is one liter less for all of us here, no? We're not living in SRP.
Sir, we believe that PWRI has their own, they'll be putting up, aside from the existing desalination plant, they will be upgrading their, putting up a new desalination plant to support the SRP to develop.
Mr. Chairman, this is a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Maybe we will also have a session that this with PWR, so they can present to us their plans for the SRP.
Corollary motion will be in order later. Member Rama, Member Yang, we'd like to acknowledge Franklin Ong now being around. So we practically have only one being absent, and Nina left, because she's preparing for trouble. And I have called the attention later, please prioritize this session. Member Tumulak?
Second question, Mr. Chairman, in regards to transportation, especially on that area, Mr. Chairman, that's what we have seen nowadays, ang traffic. Is there any traffic plan or any transportation plan to support also our BPO's 2,000 employees in that area?
Yes, in terms of traffic, we already have our traffic experts, our consultants on board to study and to give suggestions on the traffic flow within the estate, and we're also working with the SRP management in terms of the outflow of the traffic into the coastal road. In fact, we already have two members from the, we have members from the consortium who are already with the technical working group of the SRP Management Committee. Now, in terms of transportation, as of now, SM has its own intermodal transport station right by the SMC side, and also, they also have MyBus, which will help transport people. And we are also currently, we will work with the city and DOTR in terms of any further transport alternatives in the area.
Thank you.
Chairman? For a while, Member Garganera, for a while.
One final concern. That I would like to be addressed is the problem about water. Cebu is known to be lacking in water. Do we have sufficient water supply in this, in this big project? Where will you get water? You know, it's near the sea.
Yes.
And I'm afraid we will, we will be getting saltwater at the same time.
Yes, sir, as mentioned earlier, we have a commitment from the water supplier, or the Philippine Water Resources, Inc., to supply the capacity needed for the development. And PWRI has its own desalination plants, which will supply water for, yes.
Are you sure about the water supply?
They have made.
No problem about water supply?
Yes, sir.
We'll have plenty of water?
Yes, sir, that is their commitment to us.
Member Garganera?
I have two questions, Mr. Chairman. The other one, for the information on the body, the source of water from TWI there, Filipinas, no?
Philippine Water Resources, Inc.
Yeah, they are not from the sea, Mr. Chairman, it's a brackish water. They have put up well somewhere in, perhaps in Inayawan and in Pardo. That is, that is the real source of water from that plant, Mr. Chairman. My second question is, considering this development, not only the traffic, the traffic impact, but are you aware of any other opening of roads to the, to the city? Because we only have, we only have three major entry points here. We have, we have the Viada from Cebu City, Talisay, and the one in Mambaling. Is your property not affected by any other opening of roads in the future?
As of the moment, what we, what we worked on with our consultants is more of the existing road networks surrounding the property and in terms of traffic management, and we will work on controlling the gateways in terms of signalization to manage the traffic of the outflow towards these roads.
So you're not entertaining any, any access roads in the future that might elevate the traffic congestion in the area, not only in your property, but the entire South Road property as well?
We are open to studying if there are any options to, to add more roads to accessibility to the property, then that would be, we would study that as well.
That's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Member Dizon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The majority floor leader was asking about the job generation potential for this project. Let me just inform the members of this Angunian that in 2015, Mr. Chairman, this humble representation authored an ordinance entitled, by the way, this is ordinance number 2422, an ordinance requiring private contractors and/or subcontractors to whom public works projects have been awarded, as well as those undertaking private contracts, to hire at least 20% of unscaled, semi-scaled labor, and at least 10% of the skilled labor requirements for every project to be taken from the available qualified residents in the barangays wherein the projects are to be undertaken and providing penalties thereof.
What year was that?
This was passed in 2015, Mr. Chairman.
2000?
You were the mayor who signed the ordinance, and Counselor Archibaldanay.
That has been signed?
Yes.
So that's precisely what I've been telling earlier about an ordinance. And the wife of Joey Deluas, being the head of DMDP, can come in actually, because the presiding officer, way back, the mayorship of then Tomas Usmania, we had DMDP very much functional. We even brought 1,000 employees to Taiwan under the involvement of the Department of Manpower, Placement, and Development. Precisely now that I'm back as your vice mayor, having that recollection of such a beautiful project, this time we can practically bring in. However, I would suggest, Member Dizon, Member Rama, that from the office of the vice mayor, we will have sort of a meeting with a member, whoever would like to get involved, so that we can revisit that ordinance, Member Dizon, and ask, especially including the locators at SRP and others with OBO, who are also involved in the issuance of building permits. So we can come in and perhaps, definitely, we know pretty well about the right to hire. Okay, we know also the meaning of corporate social responsibility. And the chair or the presiding officer have been bringing to all of you my philosophy ever since, and still applying it as your vice mayor, the people-privacy-driven program, where people and the private sector, for purposes of good governance, can come in. Because I always believe government is people and people is government. So perhaps it is now deserving, Member Dizon, Member Rama, and Philip Safra, so with Franklin Ong, because you're all both chairperson of the ABC. Not yet up to Z, only up to ABC. Z, Safra, anyway, Ong, Ong. So therefore, it is incumbent that we should be having that, Member Garcia, this time as our legacy. As I've said, under my chairmanship in this Angunian Panglungsojed, you are there at the back, we will be coming out with a legacy that we should be helping the executive, especially on this matter of employment. Now, we already have the prospective investors, and there's more to come. And as the saying goes, charity begins at home. So I wish SRP Chair, you will be coming in later, because the chairman of the committee, we would like also to be inquiring, especially on this consortium, on the Robinson Cowit and all the rest that are forthcoming, that are still moving within SRP. So that is why maybe I'm being brought to where I am now, so that I can help the mayor and us as one body, we can also be as one in giving what is best for the city. Member Rama?
Mr. Chairman, in relation to the existing ordinance of Member Dizon, I'm just curious, Mr. Chairman, which barangay is the development located, Mr. Chairman? So at least, we should know.
Only in the south?
I think it's obviously in the, oh, no, no, it's not in the south entirely, that's why I'm curious which barangay is the development located, Mr. Chairman?
Member Dizon?
I'm not from the south, Mr. Chairman.
But I think Hermita is, duduol sadiha, Hermita, I think.
Member Safra?
Mr. Chairman? If you look at the location of the SRP, it will cover barangays Mambaling, Basaksa Nicholas, Inayawan, even Inayawan, Basak Pardo. So south, agisak tukik, Mr. Chairman, based ordinance.
I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, we have to, we have to establish this, Mr. Chairman, at least for the benefit of our barangays, specifically in the south, Mr. Chairman, since it is where the development is located. And in order to properly implement the ordinance of Member Dizon, Mr. Chairman.
Don't worry, don't worry, they're just bringing that point of, we call it food for thought. But somehow, we all are elected to serve the north and the south.
Since, since SM is here, Mr. Chairman, when they apply for, let's say, barangay and business permit, or permits, Mr. Chairman, where did they apply specifically for SMC side and for that?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
So, I, Member Ong?
I believe that SRP is, doesn't have any barangay, because it's a, oh, no barangay. I think only your employees will have to get barangay clearances from whatever barangay they belong to. But the business establishment, you will not have, no need to get, I don't know what's the requirement for the city, what are the ordinances that can be done? Because there's no barangay in SRP, as far as I'm concerned.
We will create, but, Member Garganera?
Because I remember. I understand, just like in the north reclamation property, it's non-barangay, it's classified as non-barangay. But just the same, if you look at SM for that matter, they're also getting their barangay clearances from ABOLO. Okay, it is a requisite man.
Correct.
Which is which, it's non-barangay, or, but just the same, they go to, and if ever they have also problems, they will go to the nearest barangay. So better, this august body will resolve that issue.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that's a different, that's a different issue.
I, I remember, Mr. Chairman, there was a time where in Mambaling and Basaksa Nicholas were claiming to have nasa dapitang SRP, so at least we have to establish this, Mr. Chairman, before it begins, Mr. Chairman.
If I may be acknowledged, Mr. Chairman?
For a while, for a while. We don't allow anyone to just speak unless any one of us will bring you to speak, and that's a parliamentary requirement. Somebody would like, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, we would like to recognize the other speaker from the consortium, Mr.?
But you have, where are you, are you standing inside, ready?
Yes, inside.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to address the concern on the barangay clearance. It is our practice to get a clearance from SRP Management Office. Initially, we got it from barangay Mambaling, but we were referred to SRP Management Office for the clearance, just to.
That's another barangay, SRP Management?
Just the clearance.
Ah, clearance only.
But we also get the clearance from barangay Mambaling.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I think we will have to, as also, Member Garganera said, we will just have to do something and tackle that.
Yeah, we will discuss on that. Oversight, Safra? So that will be a concern of the oversight.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and initial.
Maybe a corollary motion that will be in order, two corollary motion, Member Yang about water, then Member Ong about the issue on barangay clearance. So that we will have that resolved under this Angunian Panglungsojed. Anything more?
One more, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jerome.
I think the most, what came to my mind is, the most concern is the solid waste management. A very big, huge development, of course, you will not deny that it will comes also ang mga basura.
Yes.
And I think it should be included in your plan to have your own MRF with that very huge development. Because the city government cannot cope up with 2 million multiplier effect of your people employment. And concerning, we have the garbage fees that the city is collecting from tabisman. So I think you have to include the MRF, because I think that is in the Republic Act for the solid waste management, that all, even condominiums, even barangays need to do that, but I think that's a very big development. You should consider that.
Under Republic Act, solid waste management, 2003?
91, I can remember the Republic Act.
So anyway, we have our SRP management. That is something that we will also be bringing them here now, because this matter about solid waste management really is not a joke. Maybe something that has to be also included, not just an obligation of the locators, but definitely our obligation as well as a local government unit. And most especially, that we have an SRP Management Committee. I think if I'm not mistaken, it is pursuant to an ordinance or resolution, creating an SRP Management Committee. Anyone? Member Yang? We better also check on that, because if I'm not mistaken, it can be incorporated with the SRP as a project. But Member Safra, would you help us do research? And maybe you can, you will know who to connect with. Maybe Member Deluas, but there's another one who used to be very much cognizant about SRP, but not anymore a counselor. Okay, so anything more? Because I would like to check, because we're talking of a timeline. And you're talking about, this is what we call a 26 hectare, which estimated with 310 billion, am I correct?
Yes.
Investment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And of course, the timetable, if you look at it, there's a 2023, but we're talking about the max use in its totality. And there was the word, there was a number, 15 years.
Yes.
And that 15 years has to be a time to reckon, that is going to be 2,000? And if that 15 years has to be a time to reckon, that is going to be 2000?
Twenty, twenty, 35? 35, 2035.
2000?
35.
35.
35 or 37, yep.
Is that what we call a term? You know, being lawyers, there's word term or conditional because term is short to come. Conditional, it will be upon certain condition. Is that a term or it's still conditional?
It's, uh, the, the rest of the components, like, hold on, let's go back to the slide of the, um, the land development will be completed in two years, the rest of the...
Yeah, I know, I know about it, I'm talking about...
The rest of the...
Because we're talking about 2035.
Yes. The rest of the components are market driven. So like what we usually do with our other buildings, um, once, let's say, a building is about 70% or 80% leased out, then we start with a new building. So that depends on the take-up. But as per our experience, right now, the demand is high for office spaces. So it could fast-track and it could, it could also, but that is the estimated time, based on our experience, that we can, uh, have full buildup of the 26 hectares.
Because you're mentioning also the 22 billion, right?
Yes.
So that is more or less the coverage?
Yes.
So that we have to think about 2035? Because I was trying to figure out, even preparing myself, because I'm not a man in a hurry unless circumstances will be permitting me to be in a hurry. If the people of the city of Cebu wish me to run again as mayor, and I'm thinking about 70, when I reach 74? And that is going to be three, three years from, how many years? And that is going to be 2000? Is that 2035? When I will be 74? No, no, because, uh, that's why I'm asking, because I'm 65 now.
Ten years.
So that's why I want to see the fruits of what we work upon. And we're talking about, some of you, including Joey Dalus, because some of you here were a part of the 16 billion. Would you please raise your hand, those who were a part of the 16 billion? Only two? Sapra, Garcia, who else? Tumula? I'm talking, no, 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 not against. I'm talking about when this, when I was, when I was the mayor. Yeah, I'm talking about who were around. Ah, in favor, eh, let's talk against, no, in favor lang. I'm talking about... Hola, hab. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if we have to see beyond, so that is 2035. So that means if all things will be accordingly as expected, the whole development will be finished by 2035. Now, we go back to Phil Invest. We were, how many years already? Just talking about, Member Dalus? What year did we enter with Phil Invest? Joint Venture? 2000? 2009. And how many years from 2009 to this year? 10 years already. How many percent that joint venture been completed? 20%? No, no, 20 hectare, but I'm talking about, because how many percent as of now? That's why we have to bring Phil Invest here in another, yeah, Executive Session or Citizens Hour, so that we will know because SM Ayala Consortium is telling us. And please be reminded, unless your memory will not bring you to remember, 2035, okay? So I will remember that, if God will give us till up to that and more. A member of the Veros, you're younger than all of us. When we ask you someday, Member Rama, please be reminded of the 2035. And we will have another session on the Joint Venture of Phil Invest because we entered in the year 2009. And maybe the question, what was being asked too, how long will it take to all of it be completed? And then, of course, we need to have some answers, okay? Now, that's one. Transportation Waste Management. The word consortium. This is not the first time you had a consortium between Ayala and SM, am I correct?
This is not the first time we've worked together. Uh, we've had other, the two companies have had projects in other parts of the country as well.
Can anyone speak as far as consortium is concerned?
I'll bring in our partners. This is Russell C. from SM also.
Please have yourself identify, identify yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Russell C. from SM Prime.
I had that ask, I, I do not have to reiterate that question, I think you have heard.
Yes, sir. You were asking if, uh, SM and Ayala have worked together before?
Yes.
Yes, we have. Uh, we have an ongoing partnership for the Ortiga Center, uh, project. That is a joint Ayala and SM effort.
Uh, that's the second one or the first one?
Uh, OCLP.
This is the second one?
It...
That's the first one?
That was, that was the first one.
And this is the second one?
Yes, sir.
You don't have any problem with that consortium?
No issues right now, sir.
I'm asking so that we will expect no problem with the second consortium.
No, no, no issues on the OCLP Ortiga Center Limited Partnership, sir.
How long the consortium been going on?
Uh, do you know? Yeah, it's been, it's been going on, it's been going on for several years already.
So in other words, when this whole thing will commence, looking beyond 2035, so we will be seeing the consortium will continue up to 2035?
Yes, sir. There's, uh, at the moment, there's no reason why the consortium will not continue to work together.
Okay. That's just a matter that I wish answered so that we will not be, be surprised that after all, that consortium might just be a consortium for, how do you say, how do you describe it? Then later on, there'll be some changes in stocks or ownership. So that's what I wish, because I was the mayor at the time and I heard about that there was already a consortium before. So it's not a new thing when you talk about consortium between Ayala and SM. Member Tumula, you want to say something? Yeah, I, I wish, um, Member Guado?
Yeah, you mentioned that, uh, over the next 15 years, uh, other projects will be built based on market demand. Uh, Mayno, what are your, uh, short-term projects that we expect to be built in SRP over the next three to five years?
Um, on an immediate basis, we, uh, would like to proceed with the horizontal infrastructure development, uh, meaning these are the, the roads, the open spaces, the street lighting, uh, the telecommunications, the utilities, infrastructure, uh, on SRP2. That is what we immediately would like to start with.
Yeah, but how about the arena or the convention center?
That's, uh, also part of the initial, uh, foray of development on SRP2 would be the 15,000-seat arena, uh, 16,000-seat arena and the, uh, the convention center.
Is there a possibility to have that arena fast-track? Because that's a long overdue.
We're really expecting for that, uh, we don't have that one in Cebu and we're expecting that arena to be built also.
I ask that question because 2021, we will be needing as many space where we can accommodate because there'll be a lot of activities, of government, from the Magella City Link and the church. So there will be two organizations preparing for that 500 years of Christianity. That's why I ask that question seriously. Can it be given a priority and its completion just right in time for 2021?
Uh, in terms of priority, it is very high priority for the consortium, sir. Uh, and, uh, the arena and the convention center for SM is very high priority. Um, however, uh, this is a pretty large arena and a pretty significant convention center. And it's really not just those two facilities. We have to make sure that there is sufficient parking. We have to make sure that we could handle power outages, so we would need to have our own generators, uh, et cetera. Uh, and, uh, as of now, our best engineering efforts are giving us a timeline of the end of 2023.
Twenty?
23.
What will happen to San Pedro Kalungsojed? The San Pedro Kalungsojed?
Uh, the, the church is in SRP.
No, 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 I'm talking about where the 26 hectares is located, there is a San Pedro Kalungsojed chap, not, not a chapel, it's a, it's something that brought and had, uh, given us some recollection, especially us truly working within that area. What will happen and what is going to be left in that area?
Sir, the current markers for the San Pedro Kalungsojed in SRP2 will be integrated into the master development of SRP2.
So if there will still be a scenery of the San Pedro Kalungsojed in that area?
Yes, the design will be integrated into the master plan.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Now, I have another concern.
That will be part of the 30% opening space?
Yeah, it's integrated. We don't have the, that particular detail yet at the moment, but as you can imagine, to create a vibrant community, these kinds of historical events in that area need to be commemorated in the, in the master plan.
Yeah, very historical, in a way, it's so historical that all the priests and thousands were preparing for a beautiful coral presentation. But the sound system busted and they cannot be heard. That's why I remember it very well. So much preparation for the coral presided by Monsignor Villanueva. But the sound system was not functioning well. I do not know how they have prepared it. Anyway, another thing that I would like to be very, uh, would like to be clarified. From the seaside to SM, how do you call it? SRP, the 26?
SRP2 po.
SRP2. It will only be collect, connected by, uh, overhang?
Yes.
Or you don't, you're not bothering to have some under the road access?
From, from our initial, uh, calculations, uh, going under is not required. Uh, but as we said earlier, it will be market driven. Uh, the last thing we want is to be an inconvenience, uh, to the residents and to our customers. Uh, at the moment, it's not required. Uh, the roads that we have built are sufficient, uh, even for a fully developed SRP2.
Because you're talking about not yet required, so you're talking about even it is considered to be PWD friendly?
Well, we always follow for the requirements, uh, for design, National Building Code Design Guidelines, uh, that support our persons with disabilities.
But it's not also being closed that you can have connection underground from SRP2 to SM City?
There will be connections po, but, uh, the, the, whether it is, uh, underground or overhead, uh, uh, we have to be flexible around the, what's the reality in that area.
Okay, and I'm just bringing that. And at the same time, I ask that thing about San Pedro Kalungsojed so that we will not end up what happened with Patria that is being also highlighted by some heritage, uh, shall we say, advocates. They really insisted, but you have already mentioned that will be incorporated in the design.
Yes, sir.
Dizon?
The requirements that we needed to submit, uh, for the development permit is the traffic impact assessment.
What is that?
Uh, the question po was about whether we had the traffic impact assessment done.
We will be asking actually, after we will, excuse you for a while, we will bring the SRP Management Committee because there are questions to be asked, which actually highlighted earlier about bridges, about roads, about, because that's also a concern of this council. So anything from Ayala, SM Consortium? What you're bringing right now is only a perspective? Not yet the so-called, because I, I was expecting a virtual reality? When will you have that? Because when Phil Invest presented, they presented including virtual reality or having to journey on what is going to happen from the point of view, not just on perspective, but in the same manner, when we had the third bridge conceptualized. When I thought of the third bridge, then Metro Pacific did their virtual reality presentation where it brought even a Guadalupe rehabilitation, a revitalization included. But of course, that's something we have to revisit because right now, the third bridge will touch down and will, it will help as far as having to address some traffic concern. And you will have your customer coming even from Cordoba and Lapulapo, am I correct? But you did not mention that, but I have to remind you that third bridge. But anyway, um, is there anything you still want from them? Franklin Moore, Nistor is reserving? Anyway, we probably have to excuse you and we will probably ask, uh, the SRP for a while to present to us. Please, for a while. Session resume. Joey Dalus, can you please brief us just about SRP management? I had a question earlier about... I think it's going to be answered. A member Garcia about under what mandate the SRP committee? Because I remember there's an SRP office. And then after that, where is it now having the office? And what is the person? Who are the person composing the SRP committee?
Ah, yes. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to the members of the council. Actually, Mayor, there is no SRP committee as of yet. There is only a management office under the office of the mayor.
Oh, is there? Is there yet?
There is no SRP committee, but there is an SRP management office under the office of the mayor.
Created under what mandate?
Created under... that was in executive order, created sometime... amended sometime in around your first term there and was continued and amended by the previous mayor. And the present mayor did not made any amendments to the executive order. So he just continued to appoint the officers under the SRP management office. I am the...
Correct. But besides that, that's very important because any executive order lifetime only, if my opinion will... only up to the term of that executive. And that will not be carryover executive order. Otherwise, that's an executive order of the previous mayor. That's why there would really be a need. Just check on that. And then if we're talking about SRP, it's about time already, Member Yang, that we have to put some permanency because SRP is SRP. And looking back, we have to remember what's the reason why we have the South Road property. Member Garcia?
I think that's correct, Mr. Chairman, because but we have to look beyond, we have to look at the future. So I think there should really be an ordinance created already regarding SRP management.
Because if there is such a thing as risk department, even at the national level, the need to have a department already about disaster. And we already have also a department, we have a department of handling, the department that handled risk reduction, not yet. But we should have because that's already encompassing not just fire, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, city as we are and then having also development like SRP, there's already an incumbent necessity to have it departmentalized so that all this necessary complementation will already be in place. So I think I wish anyone, Member Sapra, being also in the infrastructure, put you all together, there's a need to have that so that we can already really bring it with a manager and et cetera, et cetera. And they will even have their own maybe building within that area that will handle even the reclamation of the north and the south support and so on. I mean, just a thought, okay? Second was, there's an office now, but how many are there? How many people are in that office?
Well, I am the current officer in charge of the office. We have an assistant in the name of Architect Ann Quison. We have...
Are they here?
No, Mayor, because we were not informed that we are going to...
That's why, that's why I was surprised why there is an SRP committee, but now it's an information that they were not informed.
We did inform, we did send an invitation, Mr. Chairman.
Who received it?
In fact, I inquired because I was just given the information. I thought, Mayor, that I will be appearing, Your Honor, for today's executive session, which is the fun ride carnival.
So you're appearing for the carnival?
Supposedly.
Good enough that you're here. But anyway, just check as to really what happened. Why only SM and Ayala group arrived and in the citizens' hour it included the SRP committee? That's why I asked, where is the SRP committee? Anyway, so any question? Because there's an issue here about transportation, there's an issue here about solid waste management, there's an issue here about water. For sure, that matter already have reached at your office.
Yes, Mr. Chair. On the water issue, we are bound with the contract with PWRI being our joint venture partner. So they will be the one having an exclusive distribution of water in SRP. As of now, they have an excess of water. That is why if the council member in the last Sangunean, you approve a resolution allowing PWRI to sell water outside of SRP because they have a lot of excess water. According to our joint venture agreement, PWRI will generate water from the dissemination process. So we are expecting that. As of now, they cannot start the operation of the dissemination process because the water need in SRP is still very low, Mr. Chair. Okay, once they have to start the dissemination process, it has to continue. So and then there is no enough demand of water from SRP right now. With regards to the transportation and the traffic issue, one month, only one month from now, we conducted two meetings regarding the traffic issue in SRP. Because we realized from the management office that there was no coordination between a lot of the locators and the some of the agencies interested in SRP, like the DPWH, the BRT, the CCLX, and we have also UHRI, of course, SRP2 and the SRP1 and Villain Vez. So during that meeting, we realized that two to three years from now, the traffic volume of SRP will really multiply, Your Honor. And the locators and the stakeholders, the agencies that I mentioned, did not actually coordinate with each other as to how the traffic will be addressed. So we...
Do it its own.
Yeah, so now we decided, we called a meeting with all the mentioned agencies and locators. And we decided and we recommended to form a technical working group to representative in each stakeholders and agencies. And we recommended to the mayor that we have to hire, engage a traffic consultant so that to address this incoming traffic problem in SRP. Just imagine when CCLX will be open two years from now, all of Cordoba and La Pulapo coming from the airport will come down to the coastal road.
The region line?
The Viaduct. And then two to three years now, we will also see the activity of UHRI more progress, Mayor, and of course, SRP2 also. So we will really see a very traffic concern.
When I was the mayor, I already was envisioning even having roads at Dulho, roads also in Basak Siniculas. And then bridges supposedly going to SRP and another road going to Inayawan. And in fact, I even have that idea also of connecting the coastal to SRP because that water, no matter what, we have to go back, which I was talking with Paul Bilyerite, because we were there with Joe Yang, that there was such what we call wisdom, why we have to start the reclamation from Kawit instead from the coastal. But of course, most of reclamation has to come from the main. This time, it's about time during our incumbency that we should start thinking because our south area is practically with much coastal, what we call dwellers. Where if we can have that matter addressed, we can improve even the lives of the dwellers in the coastal. That's why we... I think Member Dalus is aware, Honorable Dalus before, because he's a councilor, is very much aware of that concept. Member Lama?
Mr. Chairman, I used to remember that there was a plan on constructing a new road in the Pardo area. May I ask the timeline if the project will push through? And the timeline on which the project will be completed, Mr. Chairman?
This is actually the reason we are forming a technical working group with DPWH and other stakeholder, Mr. Chair, because SRP needs another exit and entry aside from Mambaling, Talisi and the Viaduct. It needs another three. Now, in a few weeks from now, maybe December, first week or second week, we can finish the... If all stakeholders will agree to the proposal of DPWH, I think SM is aware already about that. We had a meeting just last week. If we can agree on the final traffic plan, it will include a lot of infrastructure, Your Honors, a lot of infrastructure that the city cannot spend or cannot...
That's why...
That is why we need, Your Honor, we need funding from national. And it's very important that we have a final traffic plan this year or early next year because we still have to lobby for money from the national. And if we lobby money from the national next year, it will only be implemented in 2021, which I think that is why we need the money from the national, the funding next year. And that is why it's imperative also that we have to have a traffic plan that all stakeholders, CCLX, SM, Villain Vez, agree on so that we can send this to the national for funding, Your Honor.
But as I said, this council has to participate. And I'm very serious about it. In that area, with your respect to former Mayor Tomas Usmania and all of us, including your father, former Mayor Albin Garcia, now Mayor Labelia and yours truly, we must act as one, okay? Because that is our legacy. That area there, if public develop, will definitely spur miracle for civil city. That's why that I must come for us to think as one. For as long as non-elected personnel or personality should not be telling us what to do. Because the one who has that responsibility, us who are elected. Member Quenco wants a congressman, Member Yang wants a congressman. And all of us have that responsibility, including former councillor Joey Dalus. So we must sit down, Member Sapra, Nistor, during our term, we have to look at it. And that's why I'm serious about a department will really handle all of this. And that will bring this matter towards institutionalization. If something happened to me, happened to your father, to whoever who had been into this thing years ago, at least we leave something permanent so that that whole piece of property and what other improvement that is incoming will be taken care of in the next generation. Am I correct, Member Ong? So that whoever may be forget yet of 2022, it will come. But we have a rule to do institutionalization and that is an issue about traffic. That's why BRT is an issue, intermodal integrated traffic system is really a concern. That's why, as your presiding officer, once mayor, vice mayor, and all of us been together yesterday and we are still today, including your father and including Mayor Usmania, we must do our share now. It will probably be now or never. So thank you for that information. I always call you Member Dalus. You should be back, but I think you're interested somewhere or in another position. I overheard. No, I just overheard. And when I overheard, it's probably, if there is smoke, there is. Member Garcia, you said fire. You can give the fire now.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think we would also excuse Member Dalus from the podium and as well as the SM, Ayala Consortium. We thank all of them for coming this afternoon and sharing their inputs and their time for this, for this August bodies consideration. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to terminate the citizens' hour.
I think, I think Honorable Dalus will stay for the carnival, so stay around.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
And one minute, then after that we do marathon, okay? Recede. Recede.
Member Garcia?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Three members of this August body have signified their intention to deliver a privileged speech. That's members Tumulak, Quenco, and the Presiding Officer. So, let's start, Mr. Chairman, with, um... Member Quenco, since he's, uh, already standing up and near the podium.
Go ahead, Member Quenco.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Loyal Leader and Mr. Presiding Officer. Mr. Chairman, today, I rise to pay tribute to our brave colleagues who volunteered to go to Cotabato to bring the needed help for our brothers and sisters who are devastated due to the calamities that they suffered during the strong earthquakes that hit Cotabato. I salute our mayor and our very own members of the Sangunean, Dave Tumulak. Is he there? Don Donontiveros. Hmm, Joel Garganera. Is he here? He's not here. Nina Babatid. What is she doing? She's not here. She's been in Cotabato. And also the other councilors who went to Cotabato to deliver and console the victims of the calamity. What they did brought great honor to the city of Cebu. Let us all commend them and give them a big hand of applause, a rousing applause, to the unsung heroes of the Sangunean. They will not go unsung. We will sing them to high heavens for the big help that they did to our Muslim brothers. My dear colleagues, I also want to take this opportunity to deliver an important announcement. Last week, I had an important meeting with the Pideya. All of them, all the staff members of the Pideya, including the Regional Director, were there at home in Guadalupe. And we had a long conference about the perennial drug problem besetting the city of Cebu and the whole country as well. The Pideya told me that on November 20, "Habita, karong Novembre 20", the Pideya will collect all dangerous drugs. You know, "They stored dangerous drugs". "What is it? As a kamuts Pideya", they also stored in different places like the crime laboratory, the police, uh, vaults. "They stored in police" "They put them in" "Yeah, the courtrooms", "You can't have courtrooms in Cebu and other dangerous drugs", "and all other places which these illegal drugs are stored". "They stored in" "It's a waste of time" "But when it comes to" "All of these dangerous drugs" "They poisoned" "They put them in" "On the official depository" "They didn't allow it by the Pideya" "So, they stored in" "So, I found out" "The Pideya didn't allow it" "They put them in" "Now, it's a disaster" "They don't live in the disaster" "They can't come with a bullet" "They stored dangerous drugs in a cellar" "They can't come" "They didn't allow it to be destroyed" "As evidence will ever, a case is prosecuted in court for illegal drug trafficking is merely samples." "samples, they can't use" "They put them in" "They put them in bullet" "When they poisoned" "They put them in bullet" "They put them in bullet" "They put them in samples" "But it's not good" "It's a disaster" My humble answer. The quantity of these dangerous drugs are estimated at 187 kilos. "They put them in" "Surely, they put them in" "They" "They put them in" 187 kilos. 187 kilos is less than one ton. "But according to my information" "They confirmed" "There were 5 toxic substances" "How many were poisoned?" "How many were poisoned?" "But 187 kilos" "187 kilos is not even one ton" "Now, the Pideya scheduled the burning" "Uh, I'm sorry" "They scheduled the burning" "Of destruction of the drugs" "In December 2020" "At the Apo Cement in Naga City" "Is it here?" "Is it here?" "They put a incinerator in the Bayan Subo" "Is it here?" "It's a fairytale" "It's a fairytale" "The incinerator is a big one" "They put 13 million" "Now, they discovered" "The Pideya put portable incinerator" "They didn't have a flash" "They put in portable incinerator" "It's a fairytale" "It's worth 1 million pesos" "But it's not capable" "It's 13 million" "It's a big capacity" "The bullet and drugs" "They put them in" "They didn't allow it" "They put portable incinerators" "I was there" "I was there at the mayor's house" "I was there with authority" "With approval" "For use in parties" "They put money" "They put money 2 million" "I told you" "They put portable" "Incinerator in the south" "Not in the north" "It's a disaster" "They stored in the north" "They stored in the south" "But the Pideya advised" "They're noxious" "They're crazy" "They're crazy" "They stored" "They stored dangerous drugs" "And they put them in places" "In Kabukiran" "They stored in Kabukiran in the south" "They stored in Kabukiran in the north" "And they put them in" "Portable" "But the incinerator is worth 13 million" "They put them in" "In the Bayan Subo" I am sure we can find a place for that. What is important is that that incinerator be acquired as soon as possible. That is why I am appealing to the Committee on Budget of the Sangunean headed by our Majority of Loyal Leader, and I happen to be a member thereof, to include this in the, either in the regular budget, which may be realigned, or if the realignment is not enough, the realigned funds are not enough, then we will have to include that in the supplemental budget. Okay? The Chairman of the Committee on Budget is listening to us and he's nodding his head. And I am very happy to, uh, to see that, uh, this chamber is very cooperative insofar as reading ourselves of these dangerous drugs. "They put them in" "They didn't allow it" "It's a disaster" Counting back as far as 1970, "They stored it" "They stored it" "In funeral parlor" "They put them in" "They" "18" "In the graveyard" "They put them in" "They put them in" "I was there" "For the public" "They told the region" "Mandatory" "They stored it" "They poisoned the police" "The Pideya" "They stored it" "They put it in" "The media" "The public" "Why, it's a conspiracy" "They stored it" "They stored it" "They stored it" "They can't come" "They can't come" "They stored it"
So, what is your motion?
So, they stored it "In the 18 years" "They put it in" "In the Tabangan"
Okay.
"In the Tabangan" "They put it in" "They put it in" "They put it in" "The incinerator is a big one" "It's a big capacity" "It's a big one" "They stored it" "They put it in" "They put it in" "In the Bayan Subo" "In the Bayan Subo" "In the crime laboratory" "In the police" "In the jail" "In the jail"
So, what is your motion?
"They didn't allow it" "The Pideya is official custodian"
Okay.
"So, first" "I apologize" "I was there" "I was there" "For the harm" "For the harm" "For the damage" "For the incinerator"
Motion, candidate.
"13 million" "They put it in" "It's a billion" "They put it in" "Using the PACOR funds" "For example, if they put it in"
Approve, approve. Approve.
"Please, Mr. Chairman" "Please, Habita"
One minute, one minute.
"I'll consult Germaine to the topic" "I'll discuss the topic" "They put it in" "I'll go"
One minute, one minute. No problem, no problem.
"Don't do it" "I'll go" "I'll go, Mr. Chairman"
Okay, go.
"I was there" "Cooperación" "While the public" "It's a disaster" "They put it in" "In the Bayan Subo" "The dangerous drugs" "They're crazy" "In the city"
Okay.
"They're crazy" "It's a disaster" "Thank you" "Please"
Mr. Chairman.
Mikel. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may we recognize, um, uh, Member Tumulak for his privileged speech.
How many minutes, Member Tumulak?
3 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I had started.
Just to praise this August body, Mr. Chairman, especially the city of Cebu on the operation Cebu City Tabang Mindanao. "There are 5 of Mindanao" "That's the reason why there are ongoing tremors and aftershocks in Mindanao." "Then, the city government conducts a rapid damage assessment and needs analysis, which is very vital to determine onseima assistance in Cahuatag, which Harold Alcointe, Semra Marate, and Ms. Shelley DeLuce head to the DMDP. "The Cebu City Government will provide assistance to the Mindanao earthquake victims' needs to assess first, onseima necessary. After they are done, Mr. Chairman, the Cebu City approved a resolution extending assistance worth 10 million through the request of Mayor Edgar La Bellia. I would like also to thank our colleagues for approving the resolution. "And then, areas of concentration based on the recommendation of the Office of Civil Defense, Office of the Department of Social Welfare and Development, these are the following areas: Needs Assistance, Magsaysay, Dabao del Sur, Makilala, North Cotabato, Tolanan, North Cotabato." "So, the routes from 6:00 a.m. morning on Thursday, Friday, there were 7:00 p.m. cargo containers in the area." "So, it's far away." "So, it's the Magsaysay, 8 hours 10 minutes travel, number of barangays affected, 22. It was based on the reports submitted by the local Department of Social Services in each municipality of Magsaysay, Dabao del Sur. There were about 5 casualties and 3 missing and 46 injured. We have documents signed. This is the Magsaysay, Dabao del Sur. It's big damage because it's on fault line. We saw some people who were in town and were killed." "As of now, ongoing gehapon and aftershocks." "So, we went to Makilala, North Cotabato right after, it's far away." In ana, gehapon kalayo ang atong biyahe. Affected, 38. Number households affected, 20,000. Number evacuated, 4,000. Number of totally damaged houses, 13,000. So, Makilala, 38 barangays affected. Sad to say, Mr. Chairman, yesterday, mitawag ang local government sa Makilala. Gawasalinog, Mr. Chairman, gipaggyo pagit sila gehapon unos. So, kining 38 kama nga affected barangays, kining ilahang itawag o 10 cities, guba gehapon ng tanan, na nga gisi giad, giuan pa sila ayis kagahapon at lawa. No, ang Makilala. So dun na sila missing, considered dead, kining ilang missing. Ilang injured is 52, casualty is seven, so total of 14 casualties in Makilala town. So, in ani ang Makilala, North Cotabato, grabe gi adwan naghiipoy ano nga to mga katauhan. So, ang dan po, nangalike na dito. We went also to Tulunan. The Tulunan is the epicenter of the earthquake. In ana, sad kalayo, one hour ang biyahe, gikan sa Usak municipality. Number of barangays affected, 29. Families affected, 5,000. 3,000 damaged houses. Number of persons injured, 85. Dead person, one, missing, zero. Structure sa government tanan is 143. So, muni ang municipality of Tulunan, grabe sa mga damages dito. So, recommendation, once, ang atong gibuhat, ang rapid damage assessment are dana. So, food relief goods, water, mosquito nets, sleeping mats, medicine, cooking utensils, hygiene kits. Muni ang ato ang gipangda based on the recommendation sa Department of Social Welfare dito sa area. So, nagpadang ang city government, dua kama nga dump trucks, one ambulance, usak a bus, na't rescue vehicle, and the rest. Kuyog sa na to ang atong uban mga department heads, headed by our mayor. And the rest of the department heads, wala na ko malista ilang mga pangalan. These are the team, no, nga may anto dito sa lugar. So, the distribution of relief assistance directly to the affected families. Cause, o ang atong ihatag nila, cash sa kada municipality. It takes too long, kaimo process na sa ta dito sa ilahang municipality, o on sa ilang paliton mga hinabang. So, ang atong gibuhat is kita nalay, may palit dinhe. Ang city government may nipalit, o gihatag direktamente per egabot dito na to mahumanda yon. So, morning, the rest of the relief assistance we provided. Again, I'd like to thanks the city council, o ang mga tao sa Cebu City, nga bihatag o kilabang dito sa affected families sa earthquake. So, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Move to note.
Mr. Chairman, in connection with the speech which I delivered, may I file a motion? A motion to formally refer the subject matter to the committee, our committee on Budget and Finance.
Motion to note, yours. Member Quinko.
Before the presiding officer will reach the chair, Joliet de Plorida, Raymond Garcia.
For what pleasure that this gentleman from Basak San Nicolas rise? For what purpose does he rise?
This is about the African swine fever. And in connection with what was being discussed, especially about carcass.
He may now proceed.
General Akadajod. Colleagues in this august body, gentlemen, ladies and gen, ladies, good afternoon. May habun. I am here to bring to the attention of this august body, the predicament of our lechon traders and hog racers who are affected by the so-called ESF, known as African swine fever. Especially so that Christmas, especially so that Christmas, New Year, and Sinolo are fast approaching, which event will never be complete without the Sibuanos fame in Asal or Lechon. The World Organization for Animal Health listed the following key facts about this fever, and these are as follows. This is a severe viral disease affecting the domestic and wild pigs. It is responsible for serious production and economic losses. This transboundary animal disease, in short, TAD, THAD, can be spread by live or dead pigs, domestic or wild and pork products. Furthermore, transmission can also occur via contaminated feed and pumites, not living objects such as sapatos, senelas, senina, sakyanan, knives, equipment, etc., due to the high environmental resistance of ESF virus. There is no approved vaccine against ESF unlike classical swine fever, known as hog cholera, which is caused by a different virus. Historically, outbreaks have been reported in Africa and parts of Europe, South America, and the Caribbean, and the Caribbean. More recently, since 2007, kining Sakita has been reported in multiple countries across Africa, Asia, and Europe in both domestic and wild pigs. Very recently, several pigs in Luzon has been reportedly affected by the virus, causing deaths, thus affecting the supply of pigs in the northern part of our country. The Department of Agriculture, DA, pointed to smuggle pork from China as the culprit behind the outbreak of this fever in the Philippines. Agriculture Secretary William Dar said in a press briefing on Monday, November 4, that illegal shipments seized by authorities at the port of Manila last October were a clear indication that the virus originated from China. Root cause, Philippine government is now trying to eradicate African swine fever and tracking traders who smuggle pork from China. Last month, shipment from China were declared as tomato paste, vermicillai, but were later discovered to be pork upon physical inspection. Tests then confirmed that the meat was positive for ESF. Secretary William Dar went on to say that these products were likely dumped in Rodriguez Rizal, where local hog racer fed the infected meat to pigs. I can only safely conclude that there is corruption, which is why shipment like this get passed through our airports, seaport, coastal areas, and many other points of entry, including terminals. The local lechon traders and hog racers from a beloved city are now affected much under worry about this ESF virus brought by the imposition of stricter measures such as quarantine, ban, and even prohibition of selling of lamau from restaurant among many other policies in order to solve the problem. There is one question I have in mind though, and that is, are we really addressing the problem? Bilan na mani kabuan, muramasa ni siya naadiha rosegali ri o, bilan na ni sila kabuan? Ngan si ginisila o, aridiri? Bilan na ni katay, ngabot mo dinhe? Are we really addressing your problem? As head of this legislative body, I have endeavored and committed myself to paradigm shift. Part of this paradigm shift is to ensure that the policies that we craft in the city government are responsive to the needs, most especially to the vulnerable sector of our society, and that is the poor traders whose income is now being seriously affected by the African swine fever virus concern. And by an average obtained to 20%, per my dialogue with them, which losses could even go higher should this matter not seriously addressed. With the foregoing, I move to note this privileged speech.
Motion to note. To note.
Will he please repeat the motion that he is filing?
Move to note this privileged speech.
Is there any objection to the motion filed by the chairman of the council? The chair does not hear any objection. Therefore, the same is hereby carried.
And move towards Executive Department through DVMF to craft a model template to address the African swine fever virus and the like in the future. And furthermore, move for the association or ABC to conduct necessary information dissemination in coordination with the barangays to address this issue about ESF. And furthermore, for the DSWS to study the possibility of providing financial assistance to the small, medium entrepreneurs duly affected by this issue on ESF.
There is a series of motions.
Omnibus, sir.
Filed by the distinguished gentleman from Basak San Nicolas. Do, does the chair hear any comment thereon? Any objection to the same? The chair does not hear any, therefore, all the motions filed by the gentleman from Basak San Nicolas are hereby approved. Thank you. The session is suspended.
Session resume, Member Garcia.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is the committee reports. Uh, the first committee report is the Committee on Hospital Services and Sanitation.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the committee, referred to the committee on Health, Hospital Services, and Sanitation is the proposed ordinance of Member Alvin.
You can go to the dispositive portion.
Uh, the hearing committee resolves to recommend the passage of the hearing resolution with a fervent wish that the suggestion incorporated and recommendation be incorporated in the proposal.
No objection, hearing now, carried, next.
Mr. Chairman, the next is the report on the Committee on Loss, and I will just read the resolving clauses.
Go ahead.
Resolve to approve this committee report, resolve to take into consideration the recommendation to refer the proposed ordinance back to the proponent for further clarification. Resolve further to take.
No objection.
Into consideration the recommendation for minor revision or amendment by this committee, and resolve further to schedule the conduct of a public hearing on the proposed ordinance. Resolve finally to authorize the acting secretary to post a necessary notices.
Public hearing, please.
We'll just authorize the acting secretary, Mr. Chairman, to schedule the public hearing as what has been done before.
Next item.
And third, Mr. Chairman, the next is the committee report on the Committee on Budget and Finance, and I will just read the resolving clauses.
Go ahead.
Resolve to approve the committee report, and resolve further to recommend the approval of the annual investment plan, AIP, for calendar year 2020 in a total amount of 15 billion 516 million 979,282 pesos and 98 centavos. And resolve finally to authorize the OIC acting secretary to the Sanggunean to furnish copies of this report to the city planning and development officer, city treasurer, city budget officer, and all concerned parties.
Carried, next item.
Corollary motion, Mr. Chairman, move for the approval of the AIP for the calendar year 2020 in the amount of 15 billion 516 million 979,282 pesos and 80, 98 centavos. So move, Mr. Chairman.
For while, I remember Member Young, I wish motion for reconsideration. There supposed to be two corollary motion earlier to bring that water supplier of SRP to appear on as Citizens Hour together with another motion that was also presented by Vicet Member Ong. What was your motion earlier?
Uh, no, regarding the barangay to, uh, to look into the possibility of assigning or how to distribute because knowing that the SRP doesn't belong to any barangay.
Okay. So corollary motion that will have to be handled by Philip Safra. Oversight. And how long will it take you to have that addressed? One month, two months, one week? Next week? No, as the time permit, but should never be beyond one month.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, Member Jibal.
Regarding this 15 billion AIP, does it mean that this is already the one that we're going to use in next year? Or do we need to have something like a meeting or a public?
Member Garcia.
Well, this has already been approved by the full council of the CDC, and it is now being, uh, agendaed here because the council also has to approve it. And this will now be used as the basis for the budget for 2020.
Okay.
Okay. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, clarification please. Um, regarding the setting of the citizens hour with PWRI, it's going to be on November 26, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just place it in your discussion, and just consider it a priority, okay? Next item.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the report on the Adho Committee on Pagkor Funds. If I just may, there are four, Mr. Chairman, I'll read the first one. Resolve to approve this committee report charging 1 million pesos to the city's pagkor funds, and resolve further to authorize the acting secretary to furnish the copy of this report to the proponent and to the concerned offices for information, guidance, and appropriate action. So move, Mr. Chairman.
But with this already as available, for example, and it's for implementation, I mean, it will bring any one of us.
with some request from our constituents, and this already can be utilized. Is that my understanding on this vaccine, especially for anti-rabies?
Mr. Chairman, the committee report is still pending. We still have to approve it, but then I think that there is already an available funds for this. But right after that, that is when we can process the procurement after we have already disposed of.
Yeah, so what is after the report? What will be next?
The purchase request already, Mr. Chairman, for the purchase.
Just to give everybody's and yielding the attention of everybody that once this is available, because sometimes some constituents will come to us and seek for our help, especially on rabies vaccine, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, first the corollary motion for number one.
Corollary motion.
Move for the approval, Mr. Chairman, of the resolution. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Okay, for the second committee report, Mr. Chairman, and I'd just like to read the resolving clauses. Number one, resolve to approve this committee report charging four million, four hundred thousand pesos to the city's PAGCOR funds upon the submission of the certificate of availability of funds from the city treasurer's office, and resolve further to enjoin the project proponents to secure the CAF the soonest possible time to avoid inordinate delay, and resolve further to authorize the acting city secretary to furnish a copy of this report to the proponent and the concerned offices for the information.
Carried. Next.
Mr. Chairman, corollary motion.
Go ahead.
Moving for the approval of the resolution in regards to the request of four million, four hundred for the purchase of eight thousand vials of anti-rabies vaccine, provided that the CAF will be attached.
Carried. Next.
Third committee report on the Ad-hoc Committee, resolve to approve this committee report, resolve further to charge to PAGCOR funds the amount of one million, five hundred thousand pesos, and resolve further to authorize the acting secretary to furnish a copy of this report to the proponent. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Corollary motion, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the proposed resolution. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Carried. Next.
Fourth committee report, Mr. Chairman, is still on the ad hoc on PAGCOR. I'd just like to read the resolving clauses, Mr. Chairman. Number one, resolve to approve the committee report charging one million pesos to the city's PAGCOR funds only upon submission of the certifiability of funds from the city treasurer's office.
Seconded.
Okay. Member Tiveros.
Corollary motion, move to approve.
Last committee, last committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Resolve to approve this committee report, resolve further to charge PAGCOR funds the amount of one million, five hundred thousand pesos, resolve further to authorize the acting secretary to furnish a copy of this report to the proponent for his information.
Seconded.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
No objection. Carried. Next.
Corollary motion, Mr. Chairman, move for the approval of the resolution. So move.
No objection. Carried. Next.
Letter H. Resolutions of this August body approved by the mayor from one to twenty.
Mr. Chairman, move to note items one to twenty.
Next item.
Letter I. Consideration of the present business. Letters endorsements from one to seven.
Mr. Chairman, move to note items one to seven.
One to seven. Noted.
Mr. Chairman, corollary motion for number two B. Move to authorize the mayor to sign the deed of undertaking. So move, Mr. Chairman. For number three, Mr. Chairman.
For a while. For a while. Carried. Next.
For number three, Mr. Chairman, move to refer, not to refer, to have a to furnish a copy to the proponent, Member Hapsan. So move, Mr. Chairman.
What item?
Three. And for number seven, Mr. Chairman, move to concur the appointment of Architect Florente Catalan as department head of OBO. So move, Mr. Chairman.
For a while. Where is he?
I saw him earlier also.
We cannot be confirming without the president's presence.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we should.
One minute process, Mr. Chairman.
Member Young?
Can I have a one minute process?
One minute process.
Number nine, proposed resolutions of Member Antonio V. Quenco.
The proponent.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Member Sapra.
Taking the casual for Member Quenco move to approve in an omnibus manner, item nine, A, B, and C, Mr. Chairman. So move.
Carried. Next.
Number ten, proposed resolutions of members Antonio V. Quenco, Raymond Albin N. Garcia, Donald Dosie N. Tiveros, and Jessica P. Rush.
Go ahead. Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. Carried. Next.
Number eleven, proposed resolutions.
Member Dizon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On items A, B, and C, Mr. Chairman, moving for the approval of the resolutions in an omnibus manner. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, corollary motion.
Discussion.
Corollary motion.
Wait, wait, wait. Carried.
Mr. Chairman, corollary motion on item A. I would rather propose that a financial assist is not less than five thousand subject of availability of funds and the COA regulation, Mr. Chairman, be given to the affected vendors, Mr. Chairman. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Carried.
On item D, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I would like to refer this to the Committee on Laws.
Carried. Next.
Proposed resolutions, Member Eugen Yogi F. Gabuya Junior.
Moving for its approval, Mr. Chairman. Omnibus manner, up to E, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. Carried. Next.
Mr. Chairman, discussion.
Go ahead.
On item C. I just would like to manifest, Mr. Chairman, that this might take precedent for other barangays to request also. So we would like to ask the DGs to look into these requests with more focus and concern, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. This request, Mr. Chairman, was in pursuant to the mayor's statement that he will be giving all barangays for a dummy dump truck, Mr. Chairman. Ano, dump truck ba'to? Bus, bus, Mr. Chairman.
Member Sapra.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, no problem.
Next item.
Number thirteen, proposed solutions of Member Raymond Albin N. Garcia.
Mr. Chairman, moving for the omnibus approval of items A to letter I. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Carried.
For item J, Mr. Chairman, move to refer this to the Ad-hoc Committee on PAGCOR Funds. So move, Mr. Chairman. For items J, sorry, K, all the way to P. Moving for its approval.
Carried. Next. Next item.
We are on letter Q, Mr. Chairman.
Number four, Q. No Q pa?
Q pa? Go ahead.
Okay.
Member Garcia.
Item, wait, tapadid lang, Mr. Chairman. For item Q, Mr. Chairman, moving for its approval.
Item Q. But the most important thing is item P, omnibus. Release year-end bonus and cash gift. You didn't make any emphasis on this. Huh? Why, is the amount been determined already?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is requesting the Office of the City Treasurer to release the year-end bonus and cash gift of the city government. Officials and employees not earlier than November fifteen, two thousand nineteen, but not later than the fourth week of November, two thousand nineteen.
There's no amount?
There's no amount yet, Mr. Chairman, as to the bonus.
Why? You're the budget committee. Anyway, you can discuss.
We can discuss it separately.
I remember when I was the mayor. In fact, if you remember the sixteen billion, that part of that you all have and all the employees, and that is practically bringing employees to be happy on December. So, Member Garcia, make the employees happy because if the employees will be happy, the Sanguian also will be happy.
Mr. Chairman, yes, yes.
You are absolutely, one hundred percent correct, Mr. Chairman, but you know, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring out in open, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of GOs, castles who didn't receive any salary yet, Mr. Chairman, since from the start, huh? So I think the committee.
Member Garcia will have to report that.
Yes, you'd look into that, Mr. Chairman, because Christmas is fast approaching, Mr. Chairman.
Don't worry, I'll probably be delivering a privileged speech in next session. If I will have already the data, how many GOs, ma?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Because they also are employees. They are just job owners. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Member Garcia.
As to your question on the bonus, Mr. Chairman, I still have to confer with the mayor and the vice mayor, Mr. Chairman, as to the amount.
I always would concord if it will make the employees happy because I'm now happy because our sidewalk traders are already assured am I correct on it, Philip Sapra, that they will already be given also the financial assistance?
Subject to availability of funds.
Now we have to look for the funds. Member Dizon.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman. We should exert serious efforts, Mr. Chairman, to look for the appropriate funding source. Take note, Mr. Chairman, man-made disaster.
I agree. So.
Not less than five thousand.
Not less than.
Yes.
But remember, I do not know if I would have, I would have given a chance, I would have delivered that privileged speech, really treating them as if they're also just like earthquake victims, fire victims, or whatever calamity victims. Because, you know, that's not that easy situation that they're into. So, Member Sapra, Dizon, and Member Garcia, the selling has been set five thousand. How much are we giving to the five victims? Five victims.
It depends, Mr. Chairman. Ten and twenty, the twenty thousand.
That will be our ceiling.
Yes.
I wish we should keep that in mind because I overheard that their earning ought to be usually two thousand a day have already went down to how much, basan? You can just whisper to Member Sapra. Wilma. A day.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. While waiting for the action on the part of the Executive Department, for the last two months, Mr. Chairman, samtang kita sa syudad mo dawas sa atong cash gift, Mr. Chairman, or year-end bonus, hinauton ta'ng na di po na'to kalimtan ang atong mga luoy kay mga vendors nga na-displaced. sa ilang lugar.
So, Member Sapra, Member Garcia, Member Dizon, paglingko, di mo nuloh, okay? Next item.
Number fourteen, proposed solutions of members.
Go ahead.
Discussion on item Q, Mr. Chairman.
Item?
Q.
Q.
I may ask Member Garcia, Mr. Chairman, if what is the amendment portion in this resolution, Mr. Chairman?
Member Garcia.
It's just the account number that was erroneously deleted, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Account number, Mr. Chairman, underlined here, is the same, one zero three one dash one five and one zero three one dash one five.
No, I think the one zero three one one five was omitted in the first resolution, that's why karun gibutangan nag one zero three one one five dash, muna re tumo, two hundred dash five dash zero two, et cetera, et cetera. So, ang gidungag lang, Mr. Chairman, is one zero three one dash one five.
Okay?
Napaso lang to, Mr. Chairman, kaya supposedly, it's the same one, so delete na appeal ang isa, it's only one, underlined, it's only.
As pointed out, my member Hapson. Next item.
Number fourteen, proposed resolutions of member Joel C. Garganera.
Garganera.
Item A and B moving for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
No objection, Carid, next.
Fifteen.
Number fifteen, proposed resolutions of members Joel C. Garganera, Donaldo C. Antiveros, and Jessica P. Resch.
One, two, releasing. Edhan keo, Joel Garganera, Donaldo Antiveros, Jessica Carid, one, two, releasing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Next.
Number sixteen, proposed resolutions of member Donaldo C. Antiveros.
Mr. Chairman, on item A, move to approve with amendment, making it a joint resolution with Member Resch, Member Garcia, and Member Quenco, move to approve, Mr. Chairman. On items.
Carid.
Items B to H, move for approval in an omnibus manner, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Carid without any objection. Seventeen.
Number, proposed resolution of member Leah O. Hapson.
With the presence of Mr. Alan Jutina, Mr. Chairman, moving for the approval of item seventeen.
Second.
Carid.
Number eighteen, proposed solutions of member Piscaninya O. Mabatim.
Mr. Chairman, taking the casual for member Mabatim.
Nangapro, nangapro, magaconsultan.
Moving for its approval in.
Pinisakua pa.
Item A, item. Item A, item A. So move, Mr. Chairman.
For a while, for a while. Nainy mga consultant, nangapro, magakuha pa.
Mr. Chairman, hastakami, depending na unsa'y nauna og agi sa.
Pasasin niyo, pasasin niyo.
Mr. Chairman.
Maluoy sa, maluoy sa mo. No, no, you can just say that we don't, you are pushing, and when the Sangunian consultancy, we should give priority, because we are in the Sangunian, okay? Next.
Number nineteen, proposed solutions of member Franklin Ong.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to withdraw my resolution, A and B.
Who took the casual of Member Mabatim? Walapak? Have we taken it up already? So where are we now?
Number eighteen, Mr. Chairman.
Eighteen, Member Mabatim.
Eighteen, Mr. Chairman, moving in an omnibus manner, item eighteen, A and B, so move, Mr. Chairman.
I think, do we have already a new chief of police? Oh, I see, no. We should wait until we have already a new chief of police, then we bring them back here, and all of them, because the last time we brought him here, there was a murderer, and we were assured that Cebu City is safe, but the station two and four were not around.
Chairman.
Member Yang.
Maybe we should not call them to come here, something may happen.
Murder, sa? No, no, when they were here, it was incomplete, so they should be here, complete, so, so that, you know what I mean? Okay, okay? Next item.
Number nineteen, proposed resolutions of member Franklin Ong.
Move to withdraw, Mr. Chair.
Withdrawn, next.
Number twenty, proposed resolution of member Jessica P. Resch.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Si Catherine Morisay, everybody will say, second, nakusog pa kayo. Carid, next.
Number twenty-one, proposed resolutions and ordinance of member David F. Tomolak.
On letter A, Mr. Chairman, move for the approval.
Carid.
On letter B, Mr. Chairman, split into two resolutions, urging private media operators, that's one, second is requesting this local media operators to secure soft copies, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Carid, next.
On letter C, two resolutions again, Mr. Chairman, urging private companies, and second is to request them to have a soft copies, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Two resolutions, huh?
Two resolutions.
Carid, next.
On letter D, Mr. Chairman, moving for its approval.
Carid.
On letter E, Mr. Chairman, refer the committee on laws.
Mr. Chairman.
Twenty-two.
Before I will go into, Member Sapra, who have not practiced presiding? Guardo, you've done already presiding, right? Resch mana, Quenco permee, Joel Garganera walapak, walapak, walapak. Walapak, before. So you will be the one presiding? You will be presiding in the executive session? Any objection? Omnibus.
No, omnibus.
So, because the chairman will have to excuse for our assembly, with the mayor, we will be going there, and I will be perhaps delivering a message to all of them, okay? Members Sapra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, item twenty-two, letter A, move to refer to the Adho Committee on Pago, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Item B, with CAF distributed to all the members, moving for its approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Item C, D, and E, also move, moving for its approval in an omnibus manner, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Before adjournment, for a while, the executive session is about barangay lus, second is about the carnival, so please, where is Joey, he's supposed to be here?
He has to be called, to be texted, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
He has to be called during the executive session.
Yeah, he should, he should be here.
He will call you, Mr. Chairman.
The executive session is about to commence, and for a while, any amendment? Between life and death?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Who's going to be addressed?
This is about the untimely death of the, Mr. Chairman.
Is that? Okay, go ahead.
Jan Gokongwe, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead. A joint mo?
Yeah, this is joint.
Why don't you go, both of you, in the?
Yeah, this is jointly with member Guardo, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Resolve to express the Sangunian's profoundest sympathy and sincerest condolences to the bereaved family of Mr. Jan Lim Gokongwe Junior, comma Elizabeth Yu, comma his wife, and his children, Rubina, Lance, Lisa, Faith, and Hope, and Maria, and resolve further to request acting secretary to the Sangunian Pangluso, for these copies of this resolution to the bereaved family of Mr. Jan Lim Gokongwe Junior, Mr. Chairman. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
In mass, Mr. Chairman.
Mass motion, Mr. Chair. Mass motion.
No problem.
Mass motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have two, Mr. Chairman, also, also very important ones, Mr. Chairman, resolve to conduct budget hearings.
Okay.
And evaluate budget proposals for the annual budget calendar year twenty twenty of the following departments and offices to be scheduled on the specified date and time, Thursday, November fourteen, Friday, November fifteen, another Thursday the following week, November twenty-one, and Friday, November twenty-two, and to add, to add the whoop in the November fifteen schedule, CCMC on the November fifteen PM schedule, and markets on the November twenty-one AM schedule, so move, Mr. Chairman.
How much is the Sangunian Pangluso submitted budget?
I will still have to check, Mr. Chairman, but only very little was reduced.
Assured with the signature both by the mayor and the consultant, Jalus, that it will be included.
In that supplemental.
In the supplemental budget, and wishing that we have not missed to include in the supplemental budget, the budget for building for the museum and for a new library.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Because that library we have, would never be enough to accommodate those who would like to make use of a library, and it must be hopefully a modern library which is due already for a highly organized city like Cebu City, so that is just to bring to the attention of Roy and list for the supplemental budget, that we have to include, hopefully the budget for the museum and for the library, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I have a corollary motion on the budget hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Corollary motion on an amendment?
Just a corollary motion on the budget hearings, Mr. Chairman.
On the budget hearing, go ahead.
I respectfully move that the budget hearings be open to the public, Mr. Chairman, in the spirit of transparency and accountability.
No problem. Carid.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's the August, but the decision is August, but we can have the public hearing either here in the session hall or there in the caucus hall. Since they want it to be public and open.
Because if it's a public, it's going to be open. Here. Then I will be the one to preside. No, because this is a very important place, you know, you have to remember, not anyone will be seated in this particular chair, okay? That's why our budget hearing, we have to be very careful.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, magyagaw din eh.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We've been doing this public budget hearing for so many years here in this session hall, Mr. Chairman.
But as I said.
Initially, Mr. Chair, the presiding or the Chairman Committee on Finance, we just reside here, sa yang seat, Mr. Chairman.
That is going to be, because this chair is, when I turn over this chair, this is a chair that is just like in Congress, am I correct, Member Garganera? You prepare for your, okay, so we can have here all caucus room, caucus room, okay?
Mr. Chairman, one last, this is regarding the Sea Games, Mr. Chairman, so, resolve to express the Sangunian's full support for the thirtieth Sea Games, highlight event, and to grant permit on the partial closure of the Cebu Coastal Road South Road properties within the SMC side complex on the event from November fifteen to sixteen, two thousand nineteen, and resolve to waive the fees and other related charges on the installation of two hundred eighty pieces of lamp post banners along the Fun Run Route, so move, Mr. Chairman, in an omnibus manner.
But there are a lot of games.
Mr. Chairman, this one is just the Torch Run, the one is in Mindanao, then they're gonna conduct in Cebu, una ang final opening dito nagun sa Clark, so murag Torch run, torch lighting, rani siya, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I'm bringing to the attention of the body, we should be there.
Yes, everybody actually is invited, Mr. Chairman.
It will be an opportunity that we can.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at four PM Saturday, Mr. Chairman, we are all expected to be there.
In?
In SMC side.
That's one, but in Clark, is there one Clark?
There's one in Clark, pero muna na ang opening gud sa Sea Games. One na tay labot, ah, Mr. Chairman.
Why? We cannot attend?
We can, we can still attend, but, yeah, we can all still attend, yeah.
That will be an opportunity for all of us.
Yes, yes.
Okay? When will that, when will that be?
The one in Clark is, I think, on November thirty, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so, no, I just want to, before we adjourn, anyone interested to be in Clark? To watch the opening, all of us, and then the Member Garcia will have to look for that budget, yes? I mean, that will be at the same time, our opportunity as a group, that's one, number two, we can also include some educational thing that once we are there, so that will be our more of, shall we say, opportunity to be together, opportunity to watch an event, to learn, and to be out, at least, that will also be a part of an educational upliftment for all of us, as one family of servant.
Mr. Chair.
Member, are you joining?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but when will be the opening, Mr. Chairman?
November thirty.
November thirty.
And then we'll, we have to be back December one, so earlier than that, we should have already an activity. Now I'm just giving an idea, an opportunity before this year will end, that we can be together, because as I've said, in my hundred days, our hundred days, tomorrow, today is better, tomorrow, the one?
Tomorrow must be better than today.
Today, the number two, ubantasa.
Kausaban.
The one, and but together we can make the Sangunian Pangluso.
Great things happen.
Great things happen, okay?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
And then, I'm now turning over to Honorable Joel Garganera for the executive session.